Six oh one, so it's time to get the meeting started and we will have prayer first and then pledge allegiance to the flag. God have him gracious, followers. Thank you so much, Lord, for this day that you've given us to enjoy. I would thank for the rain that you've been sending us, Lord, and protecting us from the bad weather. Thank for each one that's taken the time to come out tonight, Lord, to be involved in this meeting. Pray for each of them, each of our commissioners, God, to give us the good judgment and good discernment and make good decisions tonight, dear Lord and Jesus, now we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, does anyone in the audience like to come speak to us for five minutes about anything? All right.
Hi.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Margery Womack and I commend everybody here. I just wanted to come introduce myself. Can you hear me okay?
The address, if you can.
Oh, address. Fifty-one Glenwood Road, Chulak. So I'm fairly newcomer to Tipp County. I have roots here though. My family, my mom was born and raised here with her siblings and my family. My grandfather was a building inspector here for many years and my uncle had a restaurant here. Anyway, I have roots here in Tipp County. I haven't lived here very long, but I intend to live here for a long time going forward. So I don't know many of y'all. But what I wanted to do is just come and introduce myself tonight because there's a lot of information that has come to me recently that indicates that there is a massive groundswell of interest in the paper ballots. I might be tired of hearing about stuff like that, but this is the first time I've come before you to speak about it. So the information that's coming to me, I want to be able to share with y'all and I want to send y'all an email just with embedded video. I hope you can accept that or y'all will love to play those kinds of things on your computers and stuff. So I won't be emailing out where or by, or is there anything? I'm just going to send to you guys a, and ladies, sorry, a video of some information that came to me that I think it would behoove you to make yourselves aware of. And it's nothing adversarial. That's why I want to come today and just let you know who I am, put a face with that email that's coming to you. So I want to share that with you and I don't know if you'll have the same gut feeling that I do about it, but the reason that I want to share it with you is because I think that we're all here tonight because we care about where we live and we believe it's our duty to serve in our communities with whatever talents, whatever we can do to protect it and preserve it and make it better. And so with that being said, I'll send you a video of information put together by a lady named Kim Brooks up in Gwinnett County. And it's going to tell you about various ways that they have found this irrefutable tampering with data. And we don't want that to happen here. If it's not happened here, great, if we don't want it to happen here because the bitterness and the division that it's creating in these communities. I got a little whiff of there's been some division in Tipp County between the city and county at some point in the past. I know nobody likes division. I don't know what kind of division this will cause if we don't get ahead of this and educate ourselves by listening to the information that's out there, the more reliable information. I consider this information highly reliable information because I know the people involved and I know their character. But also I saw tonight, I didn't have a chance to prepare, I would have sent you this, had this already printed out for y'all to look at tonight, but one of the things I want you to see is what Milton, Georgia is doing. And they're saying, I've just heard a little bit about this. I don't know for sure. I've tried to research it a little bit to find out how exactly they're doing it. But one of the requests that's being made is to just scrap the computers, okay? I mean, we're rural people. We know how to do things the hard way. I don't think dealing with the computers is really any easier because it's created all this cloud of confusion and opportunity for people to argue and stuff like that. And I think that some of these people like Milton, Georgia, I believe they have just decided to go separate from Fulton County in order to have their own elections the way they want to. And they're going to be doing hand-marked, hand-counted paper ballots. It's basic. It's elementary. It's as easy as you can do it. It's a piece of paper. You put the blocks separate enough that nobody marks the wrong box and can see who somebody's trying to vote for. And then you count them on the precinct level. And when you do that, you have batches and they can be recounted. And that way you have something to go back to. It's very elementary, but wanted to share that with you. I'll practice. You can tell I'm in favor of that. But I also, when I saw tonight, that tonight was a municipal county commission meeting. I'm over in Albany at work. And I realized that about three thirty and got over here, I didn't get a chance to. I was trying to write my notes down on the back of a salmon dip recipe over there, but I decided to just plead to you guys to take the time to really look at what I'm sending you. I'm not going to send you a bunch of junk. I'm not going to spam you all the time or anything. But what I'm getting ready to send you, I think it would behoove y'all to know. And I saw on the agenda that, this is where I was going a minute ago, I saw on the agenda that y'all were going to be talking about providing provisions for elections into the smaller municipalities around here. And so I think that if you look at what Milton is doing, they're saving, it is saving them at least a hundred thousand dollars in a community of thirty thousand people. So there's also another resource coming around that a guy has put together that y'all might be interested in seeing sometime. I'll send you the link. If you want to show up, that'd be great. But he is, it's like a roadshow of how you do. Hand-counted, hand-marked paper ballot, what it looks like, how much it costs, et cetera. So if y'all would just take a look at that, I should be appreciative.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. We do have one question tonight. We've got Ms. Karen Thompson from the Tipp County Public Library here to speak to us.
I do. Thank you. Information packets for you. Just going to strip this quickly. So I'm here this evening to give you a snapshot of the library. We've heard a lot, well, we've heard a lot of things from our community about people not seeing what we do or is the library utilized facility, what's going on in the library? And so I've been with the library for one year and four months now. And we just completed our first fiscal year under my leadership and we have been very busy. My goal was to be presenting you this evening with, to show you how you've put your funding to work because the commissioners have always been very supportive of the library and I'm internally thankful for that. So I'm pleased to share these statistics with you and then share with you two national grants we have won and talk a little bit about where we're going from here. So this is pretty exciting in my opinion. For this last fiscal year, July first through June thirtieth, our facility served seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-four people. That is an increase of thirty-one percent from the last fiscal year. And those are just people walking through our door. We attended three hundred and thirty-two outreach events. AVAC, Housing Authority, City Events, Tipp County Schools, Daycares, the migrant school program, the Financial Literacy Initiative, KAC After School Program, the Bayton Youth Center, Second Saturday Events, and area festivals. And through those events, we served ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-one people on top of the number that comes through our doors. I'm very excited to share that as of this year, we were able to attain our funding agent, the Board of Education, back. We lost them in 2013 and we made a mission this year to get our funding agent back. So they are now a secure, ongoing funding source for us as of this fiscal year, which was a big success for us. Circulation, the library circulated one hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven items through our facility. Wi-Fi usage, this number counts the number of times somebody connects to a Wi-Fi system, one hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine sessions. Program attendance, these are the people who come into the building to attend a program. We serve five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. And I just want to say, those programs generally started out with two to three people and we've grown into about twenty to twenty-five people per program now. So we've been very slowly working and we've been working at a typical program. And we now have a sewing class, we run murder and mimosas, really unique things to get people through the county, or throughout the county in program. Our biggest accomplishment that I consider is our summer reading program. Last year, we anticipated three hundred and fifty and we registered six hundred and forty-seven people. This year, we planned for seven hundred and registered as of last week, one thousand and ninety-nine participants for the summer reading program. And we are pulling people now from outside of our county. So I've listed in here, we now have registrants from Hayira, Ada, Lennox, Osilla, Ashburn, Enigma, Sycamore, Sylvester. So we're very proud of that number. That's a lot of reading for our kids. We're really glad to have them in our facility. So our usage is up across the board. On the reverse side, I've listed three grants that we have won. One we have completed, which is the Front Time Literacy Grant. We did this as a bilingual program. And this allows us to host families in our facility, feed them, transport them into our facility, and work with them to create bonding as a family unit. We worked with the migrant program at the Tipp County Schools to target our migrant population. It's an underserved population and we threw that, then drew our ESOL program. So that program was at six participants and now we're pulling regularly over twenty participants in to learn English. We very recently won the National Endowment for the Arts Big Read Grant. This is a national grant supported by the American Library Association and the Arts Midwest. We are the only library in Georgia to have won this grant and that grant will launch at Rhythm and Ribs. And for two full months, we will run extensive programming featuring the author Carmen Agradidi. We're bringing in native storyteller from the Chickasaw Nation, Mr. David Shadow Puppet Theater, and hosting a variety of events for our schoolchildren, as well as local events in partnership with the Tipp Council for the Arts and the Literacy Volunteers. We're very, very excited about that. And newly awarded to us is a second national grant. This is the Republic Library Association and AT&T. This is for digital literacy. And in this one, we are also targeting our Margaret community to teach basic computer skills in Spanish to help them better their computer skills in our community. So that's what's coming up for us. The Digital Literacy Grant will be running in the fall and the National Endowment for the Grant, the Big Read, will be launching in February and running for two months. Moving forward though, we do find ourselves in a financial crunch and we didn't anticipate this, but I'm going to just use round numbers, but we are part of the state health benefit plan. And the state health benefit plan has increased its costs for benefits for full-time employees. So currently, we pay eleven thousand dollars per full-time employee in benefits. And at the end of the next three years, we'll be paying nineteen thousand dollars per full-time employee. I only have four full-time employees. So to be proactive with our budget, we've scaled back one position, which was very challenging, to a twenty-nine hour position. And I've just had a full-time employee vacate a position and I'm filling it at twenty-nine hours to keep my ask very low of the commissioners. But at this time, we do have a need of fourteen thousand dollars to get my children's librarian back to full-time. And to get my other full-time person back to full-time, I would need an additional thirty thousand dollars for next year's budget. So that's the library. I didn't, I didn't hope to have to say that last bit to you, but we worked as hard as we can to get it down. Our last increase from the county was fiscal year 2018. So this fourteen thousand is approximately a four percent increase request.
Karen.
Sure.
My understanding when we met during the budget time is that you were good for this fiscal year.
We're good for this fiscal year.
So fourteen thousand you're talking about.
For FY twenty-five.
FY twenty-five, so. Now you mentioned thirty thousand. That would be on.
That would be, that would be an immediate need to get my currently cut position back to full-time.
And when you say you're currently cut position, you're cutting back because of the cost for.
Correct.
For your healthcare.
We have to be able to serve the public and the library has to be financially sustainable. And I don't want to hire full-time employees if I can't guarantee, if I can't guarantee their position or their benefits. It was really hard, you can imagine, for a full-time employee to lose their benefits. But the financial stability of the library in the future is what my job is. And so without the guarantee of those funds, I cannot in the conscious have two full-time employees that we couldn't, we didn't know for sure we could fund.
Yeah, right. So in other words, you need forty-five thousand, I mean forty-four?
For next fiscal year, yes.
And you'll lose the full-time employees from now until you get that funded?
I'm currently operating with just two full-time employees and myself. And I'm a state-paid employee. I don't have a local draw.
How many part-time employees care about that?
Um, I've cut one position, so I currently have fourteen.
But you spread across. They're not all there at one time, so.
No.
You spread them across.
Yes, and the majority are nineteen hours. This is the work we do with that. We put it to, we put every last penny to good use and we serve everybody that comes through that door. We serve everybody across the entire county of Tipton. We don't care where you come from, but we want you in our building and we're going to help you. And if we're strapped, we find a way to, to help you. And we plug ourselves in where we're needed. So, but this is what we've been able to do with your funding and I'm really proud of these statistics.
We're getting a lot of good feedback about the library over the last year or so. We appreciate that. Appreciate the time and effort to text to put the, apply for these grants. I know that's a lot of hard work because it's in the management. So we appreciate that. I see what you have done here in partnership with the Tipton Council for the Arts. Do you do other things besides what was involved in this grant with them as a partner?
We do. The Celebrate Creativity, I think this year they're calling it the Love Creativity? I can't remember what they've renamed it this year. We host most of that in and around our building with them. We participate on Third Thursday with them. We provide them with technology. That was the position that was cut to twenty-nine hours, was my full-time IT person. But we send our IT person out to the Lee Word Rogers Senior Center to do classes, as well as to the arts to help them set up for all of that. We also host the TMA meetings, so we participate in all Second Saturdays to support our merchants downtown as well.
I have a question. All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for supporting us and for being here to listen to me tonight. I appreciate it.
All right. I would be added to the agenda.
We have two, Mr. Chairman. One, I have emailed to you previously. It's for the Bradley Software for Community Services Department. This is a budget item, an annual budget item. And the second should be at your seats for purchase of helmets for the football season for recreation. Three points have been received for those. You'll see that on your briefing item. And those are the two items that staff is asking to be added to the bill. As eight, twelve, and eight points there.
All right, do you hear a motion?
Some move.
Second. Commissioner Wood, second. All in favor? All right, now we have our minutes for the work session on June the sixth, twenty twenty-three, executive session, June sixth, twenty twenty-three, twice. Public hearing. Public hearing for FY twenty-four budget, June the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular session, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, called session, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion above the minutes? Can I make a motion that we have settled the minutes as presented? Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, your favorite?
I do, yes. All right, we have a public here, excuse me, a public here in TCZA twenty-three dash oh six. Ms. Davis?
We have an order. We had an application from Pine Hill Mobile Home Park to, for an expansion of their mobile home park. There were some concerns because they had shown up, some sewer lines that was already existing. We just couldn't confirm that those lots were approved in the initial, mobile home park when it was initially approved many, many, many years ago. So just to kind of clean up the air a little bit, we asked them that they would go through and fill out a formal request to expand their lot by fifteen, or their park by fifteen more lots. This is situated between Bay Hall Road and probably one twenty-five south. This is directly behind the store that's there at the corner and their parking. I've been out there to the property and there were truly there were sewer lines and all there. We just, they're, they're looking and us looking, we just couldn't find anything. So we reviewed their application. They already have, like I said, sewer lines, sewer lines that are on. They went out since purchasing the mobile home park a couple of years ago. They've already paved the roads out there on their own accord, not by us asking them to or anything. So this area has already got paved from this, this would be, the fifteen lots would be right there in that small area, right there by their office and directly behind that convenience store. We haven't had anyone come in in opposition. The planning commission heard this on June eighth and they recommend approval to the board. They are here in the audience. If you have any more questions regarding their mobile home park. Everything else there has met or meets the Tipp County building. I'd be really happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just have a comment. I was out there this past weekend and I was amazed that a mobile home park has a pool out there. I'm like.
We're starting to get soldered around. We're not a hundred percent on that yet, ma'am.
I'm like, that's, that's, that's pretty cool.
They have really upgraded. They have really upgraded the parks that they bought, they bought Pine Hill and that time out.
It looks good.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Allen?
All right. Before we get started, I'll, we'll open up for a public hearing and then we'll, I'll grant questions to the board before they vote about any intra-conflict. So with that, we'll open up a public hearing, comment, anybody that's for or against the application.
Sir, I represent NPM Properties. Can I come up?
Yes. Name and address.
Say again? Oh, yeah, so we go to the brochure from the chairman as well. So my name is Ian Richard Young. I actually live in Columbus, Georgia. So my address is seven zero six nine Spring Walk Drive. It's about a two and a half hour drive.
Can you say your name one more time, please?
Yes, ma'am. Name is Ian. Spell I A N. Last name is Ian.
Thank you.
So just a little bit about us, a little bit of our background is I'm the CEO of a company called NPM Properties. Actually got out of the Army about two years ago. Did not expect to find myself in this field business. But I actually worked for my father-in-law. So his intent, his vision, and my vision now is to build communities. And we've started that Pine Hill. We're not a hundred percent. We're not complete there yet. We want to make even better than it is now. And with this fifteen, fifteen additional lots, what we can do is we are going to be able to provide better housing for more people. So while I say that Pine Hill is the best park out there, no, but it's a lot better than it was when we got it. And if you look at some of the homes, some of the mobile home parks around, we're not doing mobile home parks. We want to do manufactured housing. When we came into Pine Hill, it was dirt roads, massive erosion everywhere, such that my park manager, who has a Jeep built for off-road performance, broker suspension, driving through that park. So that's why we spent half a million dollars paving that park, putting parking pads into the people and renovating, I don't know how many homes for those tenants. So what I want to say is I'm here, we are here with the community. We have a vested interest in the community. And I don't plan on going anywhere. I want my legacy to be building communities and I want this to be a place that my family can be proud of. So we're going to continue to improve this position. I'm sorry, I was Army. We're going to continue to improve. Always, always improve your position. Sorry. We're going to continue to improve this park and this manufactured housing community for as long as we're here. And I plan on being here for a very long time. And with that, I'm open for any questions you have, good, bad, or indifferent.
All right, thank you, Ian.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else that would like to speak either in behalf of or against the application? Since there's no one else, again, we'll close the public hearing. Before we take a vote, I also ask that any commissioner, selves, family members, or business interest has any kind of financial interest in the project that's being proposed with the application, as for them, please clear the conflict of interest at this time. If record is left, there are no conflict of interest.
All right, we have a motion on this zone, TCZA twenty-three dash oh six.
Some move.
To approve it, I'm sure.
Approve it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, all in favor? All right. All right, we do not have a consent agenda this night because our workshop fell on July fourth. So we'll have it all in our regular session here tonight. So moving on to the regular agenda. I don't make point one of professional services agreement Snyder Geospatial and Butter. Haver?
Good evening, commissioners. How y'all doing tomorrow? What you got here is, we've got this revaluation going on. It's going to roll up to twenty twenty-four. And Q Public offers an appeal module that's on their website that taxpayers can come to whenever those new values come out next year. They can do an online appeal and never have to come into the office. They can do this appeal twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Come through their home and just hit the email button and it'll come straight to us in our office. What this appeal module does is it makes the taxpayer do a sales comparable search. So if you live at Forest Lakes, it's going to find sales in Forest Lakes of homes comparable to yours. And then they're going to see the values that the homes have been selling for. The research that Q Public has provided me in the past, most, and it'll track every time the taxpayer logs in to start this search. Most people will come two to three times before they've completed or don't complete it. They've got about sixty-five percent non-completion rate where people see the values, realize that their values not as bad as they thought it was when they see their assessment notice and they never complete their appeal. So what this is, this is our service agreement with Q Public to get that appeal module added to Q Public. It's also, we're adding a tool called COGO. C-O-G-O. That's a tool where our cartographer can take deeds and plaques whenever they receive them from the court, the court of courts office. We're getting more and more and more deeds that will have from one to ten tracks on. And they can be able to take the data from that deed and it will overlay the existing line work in Q Public to help us identify if this is going to be a split or combined, or what the taxpayer is really trying to do with their property. So that one, there's no setup cost for that. This is just setup cost for the appeal module. And this is the agreement that we need to have standard.
Not only, not only would it potentially cut down on, allow folks to make more educated decisions, as they talk about a phrase, but it also potentially decrease amount of staff time because you're not, whether, whether they decide to appeal or not, let's just say everybody decides to appeal. It also decreases and streamlines the process for them to do this.
It does.
Over the, through the software virtually rather than coming into the office.
Right. Whenever, I started here in January of two thousand and three, we rolled up a revow back. That Monday morning when the mail had hit from that revow, they were lined up out the door to get in that day. And it was like that all week long. We had a lot of appeals out there. And we had to process each one of those manually by hand. This will definitely decrease, like Mr. Carter said, the amount of man hours and woman hours it takes to process an appeal. Once we get them, they can, they did a revow a couple of years ago. They ended up with six hundred people, roughly. And they're similar to us in Forest Lakes. So that's a lot less than what we had in their three. We'll see. We'll see. The market's completely different now than it was then. I'm scared to see what it's going to be.
All right, any questions? Haver? Hey, what? All right. We have a motion to approve this purchase for him in his office.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second. Second. Mr. Stone, you second it. All in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
All right. Item eight point two, addendum to fiber transport service agreement. Mr. Allen Stevenson?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Uh, we currently have a contract with Plantails, also Trivista now. Provides dark fiber, connects all of our county buildings so that our employees can access all of our servers, email, jail records, finance, paper crew and everything. Two of the locations that we have right now, one is stationed through the one where it says Tiff County Fire Department and the Animal Control. We use what we call air fibers where we shoot a signal through the air to connect them. We did that because there was no fiber available when we were connecting those locations up. And over time, because of vegetation and the increased traffic of radio traffic and electronic devices, those signals have gotten to a point where they're not locked and those connections are unstable. It's caused a lot of lag time and response when they're on the computers trying to access files as well in terms of our, our voice of our IP system, our telephone system and so that as well. Have a lot of drop calls at Animal Control, can, some of us cannot talk on the phone at times because the signals. It's been great. We've talked to Trivista. They have offered to build out and bring fiber into both of those buildings and no cost to us. And to put them on the contract that we are working off of for twenty twenty-one and to charge, just like they're charging on the other buildings, it's seven hundred thirteen dollars a piece by cent above. And we, we just don't see another alternative. We've tried site-to-site EPNs at these locations. We've tried air fiber, all the way to go right now. My opinion is to go with more fiber into those buildings.
To make, make just a little bit of hints on what I'll just said. There's not fiber in the ground, so they're, they're actually going to run fiber. So, they're making these runs so that they have an infrastructure expense that they're absorbing and, and our cost is just what our current cost is. So, it's not costing us anything for, for trenching and the burying of cables and that kind of stuff. So, we feel like it's a really good deal. And just, I said, you know, for increased vegetation, just in case anybody thinks that's growing vegetable or something, really means trees are getting taller. So, you know, the only way we, we combat that is to build taller towers. This, this does away with everything. We feel like this is a really, really good deal.
All right. Any questions? All right. We have a motion to approve this addendum to the fiber transport service agreement.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. Thank you, Allen.
Mr. Chairman, you are voting for all of us, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just haven't looked up.
All right. We'll hit item eight point three and eight point four and...
Yeah. Yeah, it is. So, in July of twenty twenty-one, we entered an agreement with Bank Guard to provide service security monitoring services for our, our internet connection as well as internal predict us from, you know, ransomware, that type of thing. So, they provide, they, they're actually installed a piece of software called AMP and Umbrella. And it, it monitors twenty-four hours a day. The activity that they see nefarious, it blocks it, it corrects it. They actually get a response on it. So, in middle of the night on a Saturday night, I don't have to worry about that. They take care of it. That software has to be renewed from time to time for us to be able to get, you know, software updates from, from Cisco. And that is coming up due this month at ten thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars a quarter change. This has been a vital piece of software for us, taught many things and we just see it as a...
How long, how long have you had this software out?
Since twenty twenty-one.
Is this just a renewal of current?
Just renewed.
Agreeing for piece of stuff we have in, in its budget.
Eric does a potential power outage, isn't he?
He does not. That's another, that's another agenda I'm coming to.
All right. Any questions? All right. We have a motion to approve this renewal.
Sub move.
Mr. Will? A motion. You have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you. All right. Next.
Got one more. In two thousand and fifteen, when we were going through our process of putting in a voice or IP, a phone system, we contracted Alter Works to provide what we call a PRI line, which is basically the dial tone that we get from them. It's two, it's a circuit that comes into our building, connects into a router and connects into the phone system. We have two of those ones here, look, runs into this building as well as the other C building. We've, we haven't had any problems with Alter Works. They've been, you know, a standing company. But one of the things that they run, they build off of AT&T. And one of the issues is when they, when they bring this circuit in, it's been brought in on copper. AT&T has decided that they're flipping the switch. They're no longer going to start supporting copper lines in the businesses. They're going to go through fiber. And so, when we talked to Alter Works, they reached out to us. They should have made some additional costs for us to build, to bring fiber in. And the response I got was how much that would be? And they said, well, we can give you a quote, but we've got to get AT&T involved and sign this and look at them out there and figure out how much it will cost. It's almost like, you know, pass it before you could read it. So, we talked to Trivista, who is, actually services our phone system that we have. They, they provide technical support on that when we have issues internally. They can provide this service for, for nineteen dollars and forty-two cents or less than what we're paying Alter Works. We see as high as advantage to go with them. It gives us one person to call if we have a phone issue. We don't ever have to worry off, do we call Alter Works, do we call Trivista? It'll just be one call to Trivista. We recommend approval of that.
All right. We have a motion. Or any questions, first? Thank you. We have a motion.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving this? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate all you do to keep it running here.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight point five, appointment to Region Eight EMS Advisory Council. Chief Fowler is on vacation, who is enjoying himself.
It's the time of the year where folks are going on vacation, Mr. Chairman. Gets me to fill the part of where it says the county manager, are there designated? So, my designated is on vacation. The current, um, point of representation for Tiff County to the Region Eight Emergency Medical Service Council is Mr. Allen Owens. You're aware, Mr. Owens is no longer with Tiff County. So, we're actually recommending that, that the board vote to appoint Mr. Gerald Sumner. Gerald Sumner is the, he was a long time. I would say he's probably the seat of the tag and chief at DMS now. And so, staff would recommend that we, the board, vote to appoint Mr. Sumner to fill the unexpired term vote, Mr. Allen.
All right. Any questions? We'll just do this as a motion and say, we don't have to do the doggy poncho. All right. Great. All right. We have a motion to approve Gerald Sumner for the advisory council, EMS advisory council.
Second.
Who is it, Greg?
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Gerald Sumner for the term, eh, unexpired term in.
All right. Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Will, second. All in favor? All right. Thank you. Mr. Petrie on vacation too?
No, sir. Go ahead. Some time program.
Oh, okay. All right. Swim team contract.
Yes, I'll fill in there too.
I guess so.
Purpose for this agreement, as you guys know, the utilization of our pool for second street facility is really, there are three primary units of that. One being recreation, the, the high school swim team and then the Tiff, our Tiff area tidal waves, which is a competition level swim team. Whereas the team is a nonprofit entity that provides a swim team year-round for children aged at different ages. Whereas this is actually in the form of a... So, I'm going to take all the whereas's out, Mr. Chairman. We've had an agreement with them and we're actually updating that, that agreement. That agreement was put together by Red Red and Mr. Turner's office. And it covers their utilization, continuing utilization of pools, one-year agreement. And it has an automatic renew for successive years. But as anything else, there is also a way for either party to terminate that with thirty days prior notice. So, teams pay a fee of eight hundred dollars per month, each month. They, through October, when they use the pool. And then as you, you guys know, once that, their season ends, the high school states, uh, high school season, you know, just started. A lot of the kids that, that swim on the tidal wave also swim on the high schools team. So, you, you cut, you know, folks swimming year-round. I'll answer any questions that, that you got.
All right. Any questions? All right. We have a motion to approve the swim team contract.
Sub move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, no. What's wrong with that?
I think he needs coffee or something.
Yeah, everybody's sleeping. It's weather.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. All right. Item eight point seven, lease agreement with John Deere Financial for lease of a motor grader. Mr. Carter, you on the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Jordan's not here either. In November, uh, in November fourteen, twenty twenty-two, regular session, the board voted to lease a twenty twenty-three motor grader from Dobbs Equipment, which is John Deere, for cost of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred fifty-two hundred and forty-four cents. This piece of equipment has arrived and these documents need to be executed, taken possession of the motor grader. This is a five-year lease with payments, or annual payments of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. This is with the, this lease, the county will be paying twenty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars less than anticipated. So, the equipment's here. We're ready to, you know, get this executed so we can move an old, you know, unit out and a newer unit, in place.
Got you. Any questions? All right. We have a motion to approve the lease agreement for the John Deere motor grader.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm trying.
I don't know what's happening.
At least you got your hand up high that time. All right. Item eight point eight, agreement for the provision and funding of election services for the city of Omega.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out nothing different for, for pleasure than writing my name on these two items. And if I would, if I can, I'm going to go ahead and cover eight point eight and eight point nine. Y'all can vote for them separately, but they're basically the same thing. In this particular voting cycle, as you guys know, normally cities vote on all cycle years from the county. So, when Ta-Ta has an election or Omega has an election, or, in the case we've been handling Tiff, but Ta-Ta and Omega have handled their own elections locally. Because something that we're going to be talking about in November in their future, which is a splash reference in, in November, would, um, because of the way that the current voting system is set up, they could not vote a county election and a city election on the same ballot if we're the board of elections is handling one and their election supervisor is handling the other. They have to have two pieces of equipment. The only way that, uh, that they can have one voting machine, both things on the same ballot is to do what Tiff does and that's contract with the county to manage their elections. There's been discussion with, with staff here as well as the board of elections and the election supervisor. So, you've got an agreement for the county to handle not only this upcoming fall election, but all elections for Omega and Ta-Ta moving forward.
All of them. All right. Any questions? Here are none. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement for the provision and funding of election service for the city of Omega?
Sub moved.
All right. We have a second?
Second.
Cool. I'm going to let Commissioner Stone, I can have it. Greg got a bunch of nights. All in favor? All right. And then a motion to approve the agreement for the provision and funding of election service for the city of Ta-Ta.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. That's been a little long, guys. All right. Eight point ten, local governor scrap tire abandonment reimbursement program agreement.
We, we have been awarded the grant for our scrap tire event on November second. And this agreement is required to get back with them to EPD within thirty days, which will have plenty of time, if not on it tonight. But if y'all still want to go forward with this program, we'll need to vote to approve this so we can sign it and send it in.
The event will be held on Thursday? Oh, man. During the week?
And I have reached out to Keith Tiff Beautiful to try to see if they would help us with the event. We had to do it that way to keep Jason's, our road park's costs down. And I know last time we had the event, he was having fun time getting people, so working on the week. But we're going to extend the hours so that people can come to eat them before or after work.
All right. Any other questions? Most the pleasure of the board.
We still need to move forward. I'm just thinking, how many tires will we get during the week?
Maybe.
A bunch.
You tell folks we're going to take tires.
It's like giving away free ball.
It'd be like, it'd be like a holiday. We take them on work.
It's like giving away free ball.
Um, when we had it on Friday and Saturday, we always got more on Friday than we get on Saturday.
All right.
I, I know we just, we, we need them. We, we definitely need it. I wish we could do it once a year.
Is that a motion?
I would say once a month. Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second. All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you.
And we will go ahead and start promoting it now so people can...
Very good.
All right. We got item eight point eleven. It was added to Bright's software. Chris?
This is a, this is our unit, our computer software that we use in our office for permitting code enforcement and business license. This is the software that we replaced the crash offer a few years ago. This is just our yearly contract with them. Twelve thousand eighty-nine dollars nice.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve renewal?
Sub move.
Oh, please. Okay. It was that much?
Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Stone, I can second it. All in favor?
I'm just loud.
No comment. All right. Eight point twelve was the football helmets. I guess Mr. Carter will cover that for us.
Mr. Chairman, so this is a, as you see, they've got quotes to purchase, uh, football helmets. We've done these a hundred and twenty-five unique helmets. That place is part of what we anticipate will be this year. We already have the other helmets in place that is, is information. These helmets are, have a life cycle and, you know, during that life cycle, you can, you can have them kind of rejuvenated, uh, think twice and then you expect to retire. So, this follows any, you know, current concussion protocols and that kind of stuff. So, this is, uh, you've got three quotes and the request is to approve a low bid of twenty-one thousand sixty dollars and fifty cents from Surger Sports, which are shoe, shoe to...
...fusions, installations, wear and wear gloves.
Uh, I think it, the unit costs a hundred and sixty-two dollars per helmet.
Are all the helmets the same specs as far as quality and...
Yes, sir. If you look, if you look at these, you're looking at, um, um, I think some of them will ride in. I had one time new, which kind of helmets, so, you know, all those helmets have to be certified and have to meet those standards. And, you know, they're not, but there's a handful of vendors or helmets, they make helmets that, that you see in Pan Haski's voice.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion to approve the purchase of football helmets.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Will, second. All in favor? All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Carter, you have any comments?
All right, when everybody comes back, everybody checks, uh, so I can take mine. But, but, Chairman, we do need, uh, executive session for our.
Be your hand real straight.
Yeah, you're going to lay your hands on this.
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Wood? I missed for a while, I'll skip over you. Would you like to say anything now?
Yes.
I figured you would say enough for executive session.
In all my minutes.
Commissioner Wood? Commissioner Stone? Commissioner Wood?
Yep. Actually, I got something. Usually I don't, but I just began a lot of thought about the relief that the homestead exemption claimers are going to get with this tax period. And I'd just like to see maybe, I don't know who needs to do it, but it needs to come, what office? But I think we need to get some information to some of the, the homeowners that have escrow accounts. We don't know they got escrow accounts, but they're there, you know, let them know that you're going to get a relief and your escrow counter is going to go down next year. And then we've got these new assessed values coming out. And you're going to be paying catch-up for two years worth of difference there. And just to advise them to check and look about, because me, I've got an escrow account. I'm paying the same thing. I'm going to just completely ignore that my tax bill is going down.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion with Commissioner Woods and, and the tax assessor, uh, takes that on. But I, I would give it, I'll get with Heywood and have him put something in.
I mean, so the homeowner can request that their escrow remains signed.
Well, they just send additional money in. They don't, don't adjust the payment, just keep sending them, debreast forward. Because it's going to catch some people that don't understand how escrow works. And there's a lot, and I was in banking for a long time and it catches people. And this is going to catch a lot of people that are not aware of it.
So it's going to all amount of year down, but they want to make the decision themselves. They keep paying that same one.
Yeah, yeah, just to advise them that, yeah, your tax, next year is going to drop because you was higher this year, but then you're going to play catch-up that next year might not get you some.
We'll put you in charge of that public service and that. Commissioner Wood? You better not say anything now, it's sitting here quiet on me. Just real quick, our, uh, Tiff County four H B B team went out to Rogers, Arkansas to participate in the Daisy Nationals and they placed seventeenth out of fifty-two teams in the nation, third out of thirteen Georgia teams went out there. So I think congratulations are in order for them. They had two members to score a perfect score on the test and one placed third in the nation in the prone position, uh, in a alternate division. They had thirty-one people from here travel out there to cheer them on. So we're very proud of that group and just want to give them a little shout-out.
Yep.
We need their names in case we ever need a sharpshooter. All right, we have a motion to go into executive session for legal and real estate.
Sub move.
Really?
Do have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Thank y'all for coming.